We call this meeting of September 8 to order. Members of the zoning board of appeals are myself, Joseph Burke, Ned Schmedzick, Frank Donado who will be joining shortly, Wendy Tarver, Michael Wolf who's not with us this evening, along with Patty DeCair from Urban and Economic Development, Dan Coza Chief Building Inspector, and Kate Hartnett Assistant Corporation Counsel. Is Brian on tonight too Patty or?
No, that's me.
Okay, that's you, alright. We will hear each case individually as it appears on the agenda. When your case is called, please state your name and address for the record. After listening to the applicant's proposal, I asked for speakers for and against the proposed project. All remarks and any questions are to be addressed to members of the board only and will definitely be limited to two minutes per person. Kate, will you be keeping track of the time? Is Kate with us tonight?
I'm right here, you want me to keep track of time?
The two minutes on the remarks on the for and against because we will limit it to two minutes per person.
Happy to do that for you.
Okay, thank you. We will then vote on the project immediately following. Okay, first case is ZBA case number 33-201122 Casutav. Applicant Joseph Vatone, owner Stephen Miller. Pursuant to section 2-2967, applicant is seeking a used variance in order to operate a neighborhood convenience store at the above referenced location.
Okay, just for the record, Adam has joined us.
Okay.
Good evening everyone, this is Jenna Papanelli, attorney for the applicants. I'm also here with Stephen Miller, the owner of the building. To keep things short, and I will expand on anything the board would like me to expand on since we went over things last meeting. This item was tabled for until more information was given on parking and until we reached an agreement with the neighbor behind the property, Paul Bianco from Continental Roofing. I have submit a signed letter of agreement by Paul Bianco expressing his support that both variances go through and stating that we've met an agreement which is contingent on the variances being granted and my client having the ability to give the easements by closing on the building. I also submit a parking plan, a lighting plan, trash removal. And I do want to note that I did drive by the property at night. I didn't want to overdo it with lighting because Continental Roofing already has five lights in the back that illuminate things pretty well and there are two streetlights in the front. So, we're happy to add any more lighting if the board feels that's necessary but there was already a good amount of lighting.
So as you'll see what's on your screen right now is parking that she had submitted for the front of the property.
Okay.
And then this is the rear of the property. And then this is for security cameras, floodlight, trash receptacles, and overhead lighting. You'll see from the diagram where they plan to locate those. Along with... That's the rear parking again. Here is the agreement with Mr. Bianco. If you guys, it's up to you, if you want to go ahead and let me know when I can go forward please.
Okay, we don't need to know the agreement with Mr. Bianco, he doesn't...
No, but I did want to show that he supports it now. I know he spoke out against it, but so the letter does outline that he does support this project.
And the board did ask to see an agreement with this owner, so...
Okay.
It is here and they did permit it.
Okay.
Along with... These are the security cameras that they're proposing, something of this nature. Not necessarily the exact product, but they will be utilizing security cameras such as these in the areas that they outline. Along with trash receptacle that they're proposing for the outdoor area. And... Lighting that they're proposing, they have committed lighting for the exterior of the property. Is there anything the board wishes to view on their screen that I haven't showed or that you want to see again?
I have a question regards to this picture, this is now. Does this parking space go across the sidewalk?
There is no sidewalk there.
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Patty, I'm not sure if you asked me to repeat, but there is no sidewalk in front of that building.
Okay, thank you Jenna.
You're welcome.
And there is one on the other side.
Is there a city right of way or I mean, or was there ever a sidewalk there? I mean, it seems like there's a sidewalk next door and then it stops.
The sidewalk is on the other side of the street and I actually do live up the road. When you get further up, it switches to the other side. So it kind of goes back and forth up Casuthan into Madison.
Yeah, well, if you look, two vehicles to the right of this property question. Look at the two vehicles and there's an apron and there looks like there's a sidewalk there and it stops.
Yes, and then it switches over to the other side of the road, the sidewalk. See, it's kind of overgrown.
Right, I went to the left.
If you take the blue out of there, there's no sidewalk. Patty, can you go to the picture of the front of the building?
Yep.
Yeah, right there.
And that's taken from across the street.
The city does maintain the city right of way there though. The sidewalk.
I do not have an abstract in front of me to...
I'm telling you.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The city maintains a right of way there where the sidewalk should be. And I don't think parking would be allowed to block that.
So, parking has always been there when the building was used for the artist's space and the art studio, that's where the parking was utilized. And on the diagram with the blue, because of the way that it's taken from overhead, you can move those parking spaces up. I just, you know, to do that plan, I couldn't get them up. So there is a few more feet in front of the vehicles there that I marked.
Parking has also been there for many decades when Avico and Corrigan's were in the building. They had...
Is parking permitted on that side of the street, on the street?
I haven't seen it. There's a sidewalk, sidewalk continues.
Is parking permitted on that side of the street?
I don't know.
Was there ever an issue about the sidewalks when the other tenants were there? Avico and Corrigan? Does anybody recall?
No. There is a sidewalk to the north and south of this property.
Right.
The city maintains the city right of way there, which can't be blocked by cars, by parking.
Well, you see that red car to the right of the building?
Yeah.
Is part of that car on the sidewalk right now, any idea?
It looks...
I drove by this property Joe, and it does not look or appear to me, I didn't get out to measure it, that you could fit a vehicle between the building and if there was a sidewalk there. So if somebody was going to walk by there, they would have to go behind the car and get much closer to the road to pass.
Was there anything we could do with the parking, put it maybe at an angle, they would make, they would help?
That may work on a diagonal.
On a diagonal, I mean, this is parallel to the building. I really don't think that this store is going to be a price shopper.
No.
You could get four or five cars if you put it parallel to the building.
I'm sorry, this is Jenna Papanelli, I lost connection, I had a call in. So I'm sorry if I just missed a few questions.
Jenna, one of the questions we were asking is parking permitted on the street, on that side of the street?
There's no, there's no no parking sign at all.
Yeah, there's no no parking and people do park on that side of the street.
And in fact, there's a store down at the corner of Eagle Street and there's a store across the street from me and neither of them have any parking at all.
And I did go through the other neighborhoods and median stores and in that area and there are none that have more than two parking spaces at most, two to three. And most of them also have apartments above that the parking is given to the tenants.
Do they own or would they own, if they purchase this property, any of the green space to the left of this property?
Do they own any of it, was that the question?
Correct, or would they own it if they purchased this?
So the green space on the side of the building is owned by Paul Bianco except for, you know, the required number of feet off the building. And he owns that, so no, they do not own the green space on the side of the building. They own the back portion of the lot and then the front and the side going up to where you see the fence or the driveway area where it ends.
Weren't we told at the last meeting that there was parking in the rear into the side of the building?
There is, there's, that whole area that's paved, we did give Paul Bianco the right to use the parking that's in the back right-hand corner as part of that agreement because he's been parking back there, even though it's on our property. So they typically load and unload when the building was used for commercial purposes in the back and there's parking, sufficient parking even in the back area.
So there is ample parking in the back of the building?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I honestly included more parking than I needed.
I honestly included more parking than I needed with the hope that, you know, I satisfied the requirements that the board was looking for, but there's ample parking in the back as well. I did submit a back parking plan that shows that area.
Well, my concern is those parking spaces in front. There's those spaces, I don't believe that you could park on those. That's just...can't park off the sidewalk. And the entire building faces the front, obviously, and that's going to be your main entrance. Everybody pulls in, and if it's just a place where you just come in and grab a couple things and go out, you're not spending, you know, half an hour, an hour in there. So people, they're not going to want to drive in the back and walk all the way to the front. Obviously, they're going to just pull in and go in and get out, but...
If it's your only choice, that's what they're going to have to do. I mean, you know...
There is a side entrance as well. Or there's parking available on the street. If they block this area off and stated no parking, they would have to park on the street. But again, for every business that's been in that building, that's where parking's been located. They didn't even utilize the back, which my clients are willing to do if the city wants us to, and they will still have ample parking back there for people that prefer to park back there. But that paved area has always been used for parking for the businesses that have been located there.
Okay.
In the front.
Ms. Papanella?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. What we can't do is approve the parking plan with the cars in front of the building. Commit the parking in front of the building. That's part of your parking plan. That's all. If people park there later on, it's on them. But just commit that from your parking plan.
I am happy to remove that from the parking plan.
Right. And we'll click the signage up, no parking in front of the building, and what happens, happens.
Yes, I can remove that. That's why I still provided ample parking in the back.
Right. Okay, that's all we have to do. We just can't approve it with cars blocking the city right of way. That's all.
Absolutely. And again, I don't know if there's, you know, I can move those cars up, but we do not need to utilize the front of the building for parking at all.
Okay.
And if I can verbally remove that from my plan now to not table this any longer for my clients, I would prefer to do that.
Look, as far as we're concerned, remove the parking from the front of the building. What happens after that beyond our control?
No, because they can be ticketed. You don't want them to be ticketed. So you're going to want to have your clients do something to avoid them from parking in that area.
You know, so...
No problem.
I mean, because that would be no different than parking in someone's front yard.
Right. So the board can specify, the board can specify if they make this decision to approve or whatever as to what they would like to see in the front of the property to prohibit people from parking there. I mean, that would be part of your decision. It would be contingent upon, you know, whatever you decide.
I'd be happy with a couple signs. I mean, I would be good with signs also.
We're happy to put signs there. Whatever the board wants, we will give them.
Paint two lines.
Get this voted on today.
I would ask, honestly, I would ask for some kind of designation of where the sidewalk is, because I don't believe the signs will actually work. So designate the sidewalk as if, I don't know if the city will allow you to just mark two paint lines across, because there is a sidewalk to the left and to the right of this property, which is very odd that this entire front is paved, you know. When it was done, I, you know, obviously, I'm probably too young to know.
The front was paved because they put the sidewalks in when the building was already being used for commercial purposes, and parking was already there for the commercial buildings. So the sidewalks were built around the commercial parking that was already being utilized in the front when Avico and Corrigan's were there. There was never a sidewalk that went in front of the building.
Oh, yes, there was.
I mean, you might be right, but there's a sidewalk to the right, there's a sidewalk to the left. So that sidewalk, I believe, needs to be continued, or somebody at least needs to be able to get across, walk over the sidewalk, not go around vehicles to pass. So that's my only point. If it was paved, I don't know, and I don't want to get into that, but I would ask for that as a sidewalk, if that is the case.
We're happy to put up posts on our property line, signs, whatever is needed to satisfy the requirements of the board.
Yeah, there you go. Baby, just like Milhams on Rooker Street, paint the two lines.
What was that?
Remember Milhams on Rooker Street?
Yeah.
Paint the two lines that designates the sidewalk, the city right of way area.
Okay.
That's all.
That's it.
Does that constitute a... Dan?
Ted?
Would that constitute a sidewalk according to code?
Well, it would technically, if they're going to repair that area, they'll have to put concrete in. But if they're going to leave it like that for now, that'll suffice.
Okay.
Is that what Milhams has, Dan?
Yes.
Because they just, they park all over. All right, okay.
And they can't park, you know, to block that city right of way. That's all.
That's fine.
Allow them, we can't approve them to park in the city right of way. If they do it later on, they do it. We can't approve it.
Right. We can't approve it. Okay. All right.
Kate? Am I correct, Kate?
Yes, you're correct. Yes. You can't, we aren't giving out, you know, permits for people to park in the city right of way through the zoning board, so you're correct.
Well, we didn't know they were going to do that. We thought the parking was going to be in the rear and to the side.
Right.
This is the last meeting. Okay, so the other thing, all right, let's get beyond this, and then we can go back to painting and the signage if it gets approved. Okay. Any other questions, Board? Anyone here for? Against?
I am. I'm against it.
What is your name?
Bertha Thatcher. I, um...
Where do you live? Where do you live?
I live at 1112 Casuthan, and I also own property at 1110. I'm paying taxes on two properties, and we have been getting mice since the stores have been around. And I don't approve that. There is no parking on this side of the street. I've been here since 1963. We bought another house in the 60s, 65 or so. So I'm paying taxes on two properties, and I'm surrounded by stores, and we're getting mice like we never knew you wouldn't believe.
We get that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else against?
Don't I have any rights to pay taxes on two properties?
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't done.
Well, go ahead and tell the board the rest.
All right. I'll just say, don't I have any rights to pay on two properties on Casuthan?
Okay, you stated Freddy. Do you have anything else for the board?
Well... The lights will be on at half the night, and there's a store on the corner down on Casuthan South, and there's one directly across the street from my two properties. I don't need another one, and I don't want to be in case it's grocery stores.
Hey, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Anyone else against? Okay, any motions?
I got one question before we do that. Will Debbie's closing their store on South Street, moving it here entirely, or is that going to stay open?
No, the one on South Street is owned by my applicant's mother, and so they can't, she can't meet the needs of all the products that her clients have been asking for. That's a separate owner, but just related by a family relationship. So her daughter was coming to open this one to meet overflow and to, again, be a more high-end, modern, farm-to-table store that would appeal to more than just people looking to buy Oriental products.
Okay, well, I make a motion to approve with the...
Really?
I make a motion to approve, and we're going to put the yellow lines to indicate where the sidewalk would be, the city right of way. Again, like we agreed, no alcohol, no tobacco, no lottery tickets.
I'll second. This is Frank.
All in favor?
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you're all set.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all of your time.
Can I say something as the owner?
Mr. Miller?
I just want to say thank you, and I think you'll be happy with what's going to be there to improve the neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you, Board.
Okay. ZBA case number 38-20, 172 Proctor Boulevard, applicant Neil Mullen, pursuant to section 2-2967, the applicant is seeking an area variance in order to construct the carport above referenced location.
Yeah, this is Neil Mullen. My husband and I made this application in order to erect this carport on our, next to our existing garage. It'll enable us to have additional winter coverage for another vehicle that presently sits outside in the winter. We're both senior citizens, and it's getting a little bit more difficult for us to get up and down our driveway, particularly in the winter when we have to get out and snow blow because our driveway is too narrow. We got a plow on it. We have to snow blow the snow into the back grass. There is an existing turnaround, as my plans, I think, show you, and we'll be able to snow blow the sidewalk or the driveway into the turnaround and use the carport.
Does the board have any questions?
So the front's going to stay open, correct? Are you just enclosing it three sides or...
Well, there will be three sides that will be open. The only side that will actually have a siding on is my existing garage.
Okay. They're just going to put a couple posts up and put a roof over it?
Right.
How far from the back property line are you from?
The carport will be approximately 12 feet.
Okay, where the shed starts or wherever the back portion of the garage is, that's where it's going to stop.
Well, no, actually, it'll stop where the shed begins that's attached to the back of the garage.
Right.
And where the shed ends, there's another six foot plus. There's a right of way back there for power easement, so that has to remain open in terms of no construction.
How far from the... Patty, what's the rear setback in that neighborhood?
It's actually, it's 30 feet. However, after reviewing a carport, it goes according to an accessory structure, so the height of the structure away.
Okay. So it's okay?
Yep.
It's not very visible from the photographs that I submitted. From the back of our house to the face of the garage, there's an approximate three-foot elevation drop. And sometimes in the winter, we need that ability to get momentum out of the garage or propose out of the carport in order to get up the driveway.
I'm sorry, Joe, can you state that again?
I just, I thought Dane said something. I was asking what he said.
We're all set. I got one more question.
Okay. Anyone here for? Against?
Well, my name is Ellen Hanna, and I live at 166 Proctor Boulevard, which is directly behind the Mullen's property. And while fundamentally I don't have a problem with the carport, my concern is the drainage because of the drop that he spoke of. Currently, he has a shed that's attached to his garage, and that is piped directly into my backyard, as well as about, I forgot how many years ago, but Joshua Pierceall is the immediate neighbor at 174. I came to support his garage being built, and my only concern at that time was the water drainage. And in fact, he put a pipe right up to the fence. So both of those properties are draining into my property. So while I support Mr. Mullen for his carport...
You cut off. Ms. Hanna, you cut off. So you said you support his carport. So if you could go on from there?
I support his carport, but I ask again that the board take into consideration the drainage, because now he's put more cement back there, and so there's less absorption. And because, as he said, it all goes downhill and makes it difficult, that water is draining directly onto my property. So that's why I ask the board to look not only at his property, but the immediate property of 174, who also are just running pipes to the back, which is impacting my property only.
Hanna, unfortunately, we can't address neighboring property that's not before us tonight.
I ask you, yes, I ask you to consider where that water center runs down to. And I'm not an engineer, so that wouldn't be in my purview, but certainly in the planning board and the zones change, I would appreciate it that you take that into consideration where he's draining.
Yes, we can for this property. However, you said to take into consideration the neighboring property, and we can't do that.
Well, all I'm saying is that when I came to propose, the only thing I asked is that the garage did not go by feet up to the property line, and it did. So that's the reason I'm saying that is because there was no follow-through after he built that garage. And so what I'm saying is... And so what I'm saying is just, again, I hope that Mr. Mullen will take into consideration his drain, and that it doesn't go onto my property.
Okay.
Like it does now. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, what do you think if we put gutters on there, Ned, Frank?
Uh, Joe, I don't know, I mean, I, it's, it's draining onto his own property, so, uh, I mean, uh...
It's going right off the side.
The roof shines onto his own side, and he's got seventeen feet to the near, next neighbor's property line. I mean, I don't know how, I can't tell from the pictures which way the, their property slopes and so forth, but, uh, I don't... I don't know how that could impact anybody, I mean, if he puts a gutter and then it would, it would divert it to only one location of the, of the property, so now, you know, the entire area...
I'm telling, I'm telling you that the back shed drains directly onto my property.
Right, we're not talking about the shed, we're talking about the carport.
The carport, but currently he's in violation of the shed also. So what I'm asking you to do is take a look at the water problem before you okay this runoff, because you're now putting, again, you're putting more hard space into a very small property, and as long as the water doesn't come onto my property, that's fine, but that should be in your consideration and your plan when you okay this. There should be some plan for water drainage, and it shouldn't be on my property.
Ms. Hanna, can you see the, the computer, can you see the screen?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it now, his house is in the...
As you'll see, this proposed carport, um, it's a shed-style roof, and it's pitched that the water would, uh, drain off the side of the garage, not to the rear of the garage.
Okay, all right, that's fine, as long as I'm not coming back again and again, because the water wasn't...
No, the water would, the water would run off naturally, uh, in the slope, and the slope is heading towards the, the side property, not the rear.
Mr. Mullen, you don't intend to...
Of course it's going to the rear. It, it's gonna go down, but then it's gonna follow the slope, and the slope in front of it is much higher, like he said, three feet higher than his carport is gonna be.
It's the same water that's running off the current garage, it's gonna run off the current garage and just slope down even further onto the shed of the carport, it's, it's the water.
The draining of the current garage, that it's, itself, is going onto my property. So I'm just being proactive about it, I don't want a double run, I, I know the physics behind it all.
Ned, do you have any comment in that regard?
I, I don't see a volume of water, uh, occurring here, other than what's existing, or, it, it just, I, I don't know, like I said, it does not make sense to me, I mean, it's trying to, it's some property, whatever water...
You're welcome to come over and look at the property, rather than sit there and say it doesn't make sense to you, you're welcome to come over and look at the property and consider it for yourself.
Well, we are, we are working on it right now, and, and we, and we are, we make sense of what we see, I mean, there's enough area there to handle the water that'll be running off of that carport. It's not gonna be much different than, than what's coming off of the garage.
Right, that, I, I don't...
Exactly, and what's coming off of the garage is coming onto my property. So this is what I don't, I'm, I'm asking you to look at your plan, please don't, this is somebody's job to do the right engineering for the water problem, and it just needs to be done, and that's all I'm asking, is that it doesn't, you, you're saying you don't know, so therefore I'm not sure why you're speculating, because an engineer can tell you where that water's gonna be.
I don't think we need an engineer, so we don't want to...
I don't know, it's speculating.
Thank you, anyone else here, or against? Hey, Board, are we ready to vote?
Mr. Mullen, do you have any, um, insight as to how much water there is, or if there's an issue with water or drainage on your property?
Uh, I don't have any way of measuring quantity of water. I agree with the Board's comment that the volume will be no different than it was coming off of my existing roof. Um, the, as stated, that, uh, the water is piped directly into her yard, it's a misstatement, um, but, I, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Mullen, do you plan on putting a gutter on the edge of the carport?
Yes.
You do?
Yes. There, as you, if you, maybe you can't see, but in the existing garage, there are two gutters at this point now.
And where does that, where does that water, where's it diverted to?
The gutter on the left-hand side of the garage diverts right directly onto, uh, my property, uh, just prior, you can see the gutter coming down the side of the building. That's onto my property, the gutter on the other side comes down, and it's brought to the back of the shed, and there's an additional six feet of my property that it drains onto. Most of the water, um, that's gonna be on this carport, it's gonna come off the left side of this shed, off the left side of the garage, and it's gonna, it's gonna go right onto my, my lawn. Where the water goes to after that, I don't know, anybody can be held accountable where water drains to. My driveway has a three-foot pitch to it, I, I can't be held responsible where that water drains to.
You're not planning on regrading your backyard or anything like that?
No. Uh, it will remain approximately the same level that it is right, well, the same level it is right now. I, I don't, really, to be honest, I don't know why we are discussing this issue, it had, how is it germane to the approval of the carport?
It's a water issue, Mr. Mullen, that is affecting my property.
I'm directing the promise to the Board.
All, all comments are directed to the Board, thank you, the comments section is over with. The comments section is over, thank you.
This is Kate Hartnett, can I...
Kate, uh, Joe, give Kate a chance to...
Okay, go ahead, Kate, please.
It looks like Ms. Hanna's water problems, I mean, I, I can't say for sure, I'm not an engineer, but I do notice that Mr. Mullen's shed is pitched toward the prop, the back property line, however, that is not particularly germane to the question of this area variance, and, you know, that the standard for an area variance is just that it's not gonna, you know, cause any, cause any harm to the neighborhood, and as long as that, uh, the carport roof is pitched onto Mr. Mullen's yard, I, I, you know, as long as it's not being spouted down towards the, the back, uh, line, you know what I mean? Just get onto the side, I think, you know, there's no harm there.
Thank you, Kate.
Well, I agree with Kate, and I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Okay, I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you're all set, Mr. Mullen.
Thank you very much.
Our building is currently closed, so you'll have to contact the Code Department tomorrow for a permit.
We already have the permit application, Patty.
Oh, you do, okay, then, uh, Mr. Coles will contact with you.
Who will be? Who'll be in touch with me? Okay.
The Coles will tell you to touch with you tomorrow, Mr. Mullen.
All right, 'cause I'd like to get started on the construction, because, you know, summer's over.
So I'm gonna be ahold of you tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
ZBAC case number thirty-nine dash twenty, one sixty-one Proctor Boulevard, applicant Coy Pham, pursuant to section two dash two-nine sixty-seven, the applicant is seeking an area variance in order to legitimize the construction of a shed at the above-referenced location. Who's here at one sixty-one Proctor Boulevard?
Hi, my name's Ryan Chow, uh, I'm a translator for Coy today.
Okay.
Sorry, can you spell your name for me, please?
Uh, it's R.Y.A.N., first name, last name is C.H.O.W.
Thank you. Okay, if you just wanna go ahead and tell the Board, uh, what he's proposing, that would be great.
Well, we're proposing a ten-by-twelve shed, um, primarily to get things that are in the garage in there in the winter when you park their cars, versus leaving everything outside and kinda making everything a mess. Um, so the shed is a hundred feet away from the road, and kind of off to the side, as you can see. Plan on putting, and, uh, there's the picture there.
Go back to the, is that the shed now partially built?
Yes.
Yeah.
What's it, what's it made out of, what, what, what are the materials?
It's ply, it's plywood.
Is it proposed to be pitched with?
We're proposing to finish it.
How, the siding?
Uh, siding, same color as the house, along with, um, the wood, on the roof.
We didn't hear you with that, what was that?
Uh, we plan on doing wood siding, uh, similar to the house, along with shingles on the roof and a garage door on the front.
Hey, what's the debris to the right of the shed right now? What, what is that?
I, I can't hear a word you're saying, there's noise going on.
They said, what, what's my paint to the right of the shed? Looks like debris.
Oh, I think tho- those are, those are limbs from the trees to the right.
Got any better pictures of where it ran around?
I, I didn't know, I didn't hear ya.
Okay.
It's Mr. Mullen's.
Do you have any better pictures of what the shed looks like, or what it's gonna look like when it's done?
No, we, we didn't have any of that.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, um, Mr. Chow, I think you just said that they wanna construct a ten-by-twelve shed, but it looks like the application, it was...
Twelve by sixteen.
Twelve by sixteen?
Oh, no, twelve by sixteen.
Uh, uh, yeah, see, he, he did say twelve by sixteen.
Okay.
Uh, we have, we have verbal approval through, um, pretty much all the immediate neighbors, um, directly across and on both sides there.
And you said it's gonna have a garage door facing the street?
Yes, it is.
Not gonna be parking, are they?
No, it, it's gonna be storage for things in the garage that need to go in the winter when, when they park the, uh, both cars in there, so the, you know, the snowplows, um, all the, uh, lawn mowers and, uh, rakes and all that stuff.
Uh, what's the bricks of the garage door in the front? I mean, we're not gonna end up like an, another driveway leading up to this thing.
But it's, it's only ten by twelve, I mean, you can't, there's not many...
Twelve by twelve.
Uh, sixteen by twelve.
Twelve by sixteen, which is too big.
Well, I mean, it's only primarily for, uh, a ride, it's primarily for a ride mower and the snowblowers and all the rakes and stuff, all the yard equipment.
And you don't need twelve by sixteen.
We have a big backyard, we have all the tool, we need to pull out of the tool now, to maintain.
That is a very large backyard.
Yeah, it's a huge property here, um... I don't think we're saying that shit with, with, uh, size of a joke, 'cause it, it seems like they do need it.
Yeah, it is big.
But, uh, the thing, the thing that bothers me a little bit is this garage, the door facing the front of the property.
Another driveway event.
Right, I'm concerned it's gonna be another driveway at some point with this thing. Uh, and also, all of a sudden, you know, you got a, you got a garage door, you're looking at the house, all of a sudden you got another garage door looking at that stuff.
Isle of the door, rather than an overhead door?
I would say, James, put the garage door in the back or the side, and, and ask for it to be matched to the house, the same color shining.
Make it, make it a shed, not a garage.
Or the shed was planned to look very similar to the house, um, but you guys recommend putting the door on the back, we're more than willing.
Yes, absolutely, I would be more comfortable with that, and, uh, making sure that the style and, uh, the siding matches, uh, the house.
Absolutely.
I'll start talking about you guys, bud.
All right, let's see if we hear from any, any neighbors, anyone for or against this project?
Again, I'm an immediate neighbor, Ellen Hanna, um, I support it, it looks lovely.
Thank you. Oh, what do you think, we'll put that, the garage door in the back, or on the side?
Yes.
Ned, what are your thoughts?
I would, I would, yeah, absolutely, I would make a motion, uh, to prove, to make it, uh, the garage door to the side or the back, it's their option, uh, but I, I don't wanna see that in the front.
That in the front.
So do you, do you want a flame on the front, or possibly a window, or...
And, uh, it would, it would need to match the house, the same color shining and, uh, the roof as well.
Okay.
Should we put a sliding or front door on, on, towards the street?
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
Should we put a sliding door, or maybe like just a regular door on the front, uh, the shed facing the street?
I would say a man door, but I, I don't know, uh, not a slide door.
Okay, man.
You know, windows, I mean, it's, uh, that's up to you, but I don't wanna, I, I wouldn't want to see a, a garage.
We don't, we don't wanna see an overhead door facing the street.
Okay.
Anybody wanna second that?
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, again, um, the Code Department is closed at this time, so you'll have to give them a phone call tomorrow to get your, it's three-one-five-seven-nine-two-zero-one-six-three. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, have a nice night.
Thank you. ZBAC case number forty-dash-twenty, four-twenty-one Linda View Lane, applicant Timothy Kathleen Barkum, pursuant to section two-dash-two-nine, the applicant is seeking an area variance in order to construct the shed at the above-referenced location. Okay.
Hello, my name is Tim Barkum, I live at four-twenty-one Linda View Lane, I currently have a ten-by-twelve shed in my backyard now, and I would like to just, uh, get a little bit bigger shed, a ten-by-sixteen, to, uh, store all my, uh, pool supplies and, uh, patio furniture and my lawn care for, uh, uh, machines and everything right inside the shed, just to have more room for storage.
Okay, so you're gonna remove the ten-by-twelve?
Yep.
And you wanna put a ten-by-sixteen in the same location?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Uh, yeah, it's a little, probably about a foot taller, and it's obviously four feet wider. But it's the same, it's the same style shed, similar to it.
It's not gonna be taller than the hatch all the way around?
It's not gonna be any taller than what, I'm sorry?
The hatch, you still have that, all that?
Oh, no, no. Probably 14 feet high.
Any concerns? Anyone here for, against? Any motions? I'll make a motion to approve.
Was that Frank?
Yes. Any seconds?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, again, Mr. Mr. Barkum, the codes department is closed, you'll have to give them a phone call tomorrow, 315-792-0163, in order to get your permit.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you, you too.
Okay, Joe, I think you can adjourn the meeting.
The meeting is adjourned, thank you, board.
Thank you, guys, see you later.
Bye. Bye.